I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for Tuesday, May the 15th, 2018. Exenia, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for all. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pont?
Here.
Commissioner Monet?
Here.
Commissioner Knudsen is absent. Chair Kistner?
Here.
And Vice Chair Hardy is absent as well.
Are we supposed to know why they're absent, or is that only the City Council?
No, they're just not here. They're not here.
It was supposed to be public.
I don't recall anything in the commission's bylaws that would require you to excuse them, which is often what will happen at the City Council level, and there's nothing in state law that would require that.
I think they both told us that they were not going to be here last meeting, Tom. Next item is public forum. This is the opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion or take action on matters not described on this agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Is there any public comment? Closed public comment. Consent items: Members of the commission or the public may ask that any items be considered individually. For purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment, unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. 4.1 is approval of the minutes, May 1st, 2018. 4.2, applicant Stan Monte is requesting a design review exemption to expand the floor area of the primary residence by a total of 218 square feet in order to introduce a master closet, 189 square feet, and construct an additional, an addition to the master bath, 29 square feet. The additions would be consistent with the exterior materials and treatments as currently exists on the residence.
I have no reason to pull either one, except that they needed, I think they need to be voted on separately, because I was not here at the meeting that the minutes are, unless I can just abstain. But I don't want to abstain from both, so.
Then I think you'd have to pull the minutes. You'd have to request me to pull the minutes.
Okay. Is that what I need to do? Is that right? So then I'll do that.
No, that's fine. I would note that if you have reviewed the, either the transcript or the video from the meeting, you then are able to vote on the minutes.
Oh, I did not review the, this was the last meeting, right? This has been the last meeting?
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Yes. Okay, I didn't, so.
All right, so we have to pull 4.1. Do I hear a motion to approve 4.2?
Move the consent agenda as amended.
What? Well, I abstain from 4.1, and I approve, I'm okay with 4.2. Well, I'm not sure that was the.
So, Mr. House has reminded me that three affirmative votes are required. There is a parliamentary rule, however, that an abstention under these circumstances is deemed to be an affirmative vote.
Well, I think maybe we should pull both of them, not vote on either one of them, because I think I live within 300 feet of.
That can be put over to a future meeting, then.
I think so. I mean, I could see it from my house.
Okay, then you have to pull both of them.
So I will abstain from the first one. That will be counted, so we could pass the minutes.
Okay, considering we pulled both of them now, I will move 4.1.
You should second it.
You can have to second it.
I can second it.
That's the minutes.
You can second it if there's nobody else available to second on it. Yes, you can.
That's correct.
Okay, you second it, all right. Now we have a motion to second on the minutes.
I'm sorry, did you, were you saying you had a conflict on the minutes?
On 4.2.
No.
I live right, I mean, I can throw a stone and hit the property, and I don't throw very far anymore, Tom.
You may vote on the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Abstain.
Okay. We don't have enough to vote on 4.2, because she has to abstain herself. Okay, so we have to, what?
Continue.
Continue, but I can't even make a, can we get a motion to continue?
You don't need a motion to continue. It'll just, it'll automatically be continued to a future meeting. They're continued to the next meeting due to lack of quorum.
All right, our next items are public hearings. 5.1 is going to be heard on June 5th, 2018, and will be re-noticed as a public hearing requested by Brian Heim on behalf of Sander LLC for tentative map and design review approval in orders subdivided an existing 14.75 acre into two newly created parcels, 1.05 acres in size and the other at 14.25 acres in size at 52525 Madrona Avenue in the 29th 20-acre agricultural A20 zoning district. I could read further than that. So, 5.2 is a request for a use permit to operate a green biotics beauty shop in an existing tenant space at 1309 Main Street, Suite B, in the Central Business Zoning District. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Kistner. The item before the commission this evening is a use permit to operate a beauty shop and formula business in the Central Business Zoning District. The property at 1309 Main Street, Suite B, is designated Central Business by both the General Plan and the Zoning Code. It is a historic building in the designated historic downtown and is also located within the parking impact overlay district. The applicant's requesting use permit to operate, as staff mentioned, a formula business and beauty shop, both of which trigger use permit in that zoning district, and an existing tenant space. Other locations of Green Biotics, which is the proposed formula business, are located in Wellington, Florida, La Jolla, California, and Naples, Florida. They propose to sell prepackaged herbal supplements, beauty products, specialty coffee and teas, and have a small treatment area for customers available to sample products or receive spa treatments. Proposed hours of operation are from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., seven days a week. However, extended hours are being requested for up to 9:00 p.m. for seasonal events, seasonal and special events. They are proposing one full-time manager and two part-time employees. As identified in the zoning code, there are several applicable general plan policies to this request. The Central Business land use designation provides for retail, personal service uses, and similar compatible uses to serve local residents and the surrounding area. Emphasis is on pedestrian-oriented retail and service uses, particular those which are identified as local serving. And the general plan identifies local serving as uses that derive a significant portion of their revenue from St. Helena residents, provide services and products which satisfy local residents' day-to-day needs, and from which a majority of shoppers are regular repeat customers, and the nature of the goods focuses on necessity over novelty. There are several general plan policies identified as applicable to the project in the staff report. Staff will point out a few of them. General plan policies 2.6.27 identifies that commercial uses, that the city should prohibit commercial uses that are primarily tourist-serving in nature or that are inconsistent with the community image of St. Helena. 2.6.38 encourages primarily local serving businesses in the Central Business and service commercial land use designations. Further, in keeping with the zoning for the site, the Central Business zoning designation identifies both, as mentioned, health and beauty uses and formula business as conditionally allowed. Staff's analysis of this project identifies that as a health and beauty store, the project could potentially meet the applicable goals of the general plan and zoning code. However, it remains uncertain the extent to which this specific business would fit within the established character of the Central Business zoning, or zoning district and land use designation, and the current mix of uses, or given the current mix of uses in the downtown. As identified, the use is identified as a formula business, and its introduction may not lead to or lend a mix or balance of use types envisioned for this district and designation under the general plan. As mentioned, the site is both designated historical and in the parking impact district. The project is not subject to water neutrality, it is not new development, and the staff report does summarize the findings required of the commission in order to approve a use permit. And the staff analysis of these findings identified that the business policy, the business could meet the policies related to the general plan policies. However, we are requesting Planning Commission input to determine how the application fulfills the necessary findings. No issues specific to this application were identified, other than the concern over the project's ability to meet the community image goals of the general plan. And with that, it is recommended, or I'm sorry, no comments have been received on this project. And with that, it is recommended that the Planning Commission determine the project be exempt, deemed exempt from the requirements of SEQA, and consider the required findings identified in the municipal code regarding conditional businesses, and also those in the general plan, and vote to approve, modify, or deny the use permit for the proposed green biotics formula business use. And staff is available for questions. Ms. Lily Bianco was the project planner, however, I'm filling in for her this evening.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
I have a question.
Bobby?
It's okay, it's okay.
Ask John.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see, I didn't see that.
I've all yielded my present current time to you.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. I apologize, I wasn't looking. Is there a bathroom currently where this, in this, at this location?
I'm uncertain about that. I'll review the project file, then.
Because in the, I know in the water, under the water study, if there is going to be a bathroom, I don't know if there's, if it's, if it's the same bathroom, or there's going to be a, you know, if it's going to be the same water use as before.
The floor plan does not identify a restroom.
Okay. All right, so I assume there's not going to be one built, okay. Thank you.
John?
The staff report reads beauty products, but the applicant's write-up speaks about derma care products. Not necessarily the same. I mean, could you tell me exactly what they're going to sell in that category?
The term "beauty products" may come from staff's online research of the business, and maybe some conversations. Again, I wasn't the project planner, so I haven't had direct communications with the applicant.
Okay.
It's unclear to me whether the applicant is here. Is anyone in the room representing the applicant?
Okay, I'll.
So I can't provide a distinction. It could have been staff summarizing the kind of variety of products that they offer.
The second question is on the special events until 9:00 a.m. You've got 375 square feet. What kind of special events can you hold in 375 square feet?
The application doesn't identify any specifics. They just requested the ability to stay open occasionally.
Okay.
Any more questions?
I suppose I do have one more. We have a local serving question, and we have a formula business question. Those, I think, are the two things around which this application circulates. Have we ever established any kind of standards or considerations around this kind of interface?
Not that I'm aware of. I know, obviously, with regards to tasting rooms and wineries, there have been discussions regarding how those business types can be seen as local serving. I'm not aware of any discussions at the Planning Commission level, or council level, or adopted policies that reference retail uses with regards to formula elements and local serving elements.
Okay. This is, in my mind, at least somewhat of a balancing question. Local serving versus formula, okay? And my rest of my questions are, I suppose, for the applicant.
Would the applicant like to speak?
We have comments. We're not asking.
All right, a little public comment?
My name is Bill Hochell.
Come up to the microphone.
Are they a beauty shop?
They've, the applicant's not here, so I don't want to speak for them, but they've identified in their application that they sell herbal supplements, coffee teas, and beauty products, or derma care products, so skincare.
Well, they're a retail store.
That's correct.
This is their, some of their history. I'd like to leave it with you, the board. And they, they probably give you either free tea or a gift, and then they take you over to a table and sell you $700 to $1,000 worth of makeup that you can buy in the drugstore for half the price.
I haven't seen it.
So, that's the history.
Their ripoff.
Any more public comment?
My parents purchased the old heaven and earth, Mr. and Mrs. Hochell, and we've been in the beauty industry for 55 years, they have. And, you know, this all sounds like big words and all, but bottom line is, I'm an esthetician, and I've been one for 28 years, and I know exactly, we have dealt with these people and their competitors. They've been trying to come into St. Helena for quite some time, and they operate under different names. Jeff Feeney can attest to that. And they would have rescued my parents out of the high rents that we're paying, and we're trying to negotiate with the landlords. They offered hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to my parents, and it makes me want to cry, because they're both not doing real well with their health, but they, we, once we questioned them and asked questions, because we've all dealt with people in the malls, women walking down, and you're given samples, given samples. Come here, come here, come here, come here, let me give you, so really, it doesn't matter if they have 300 square feet. They're going to be soliciting on sidewalks, and if you push, push comes to shove, and you ask them to sign something that says they will not solicit on the sidewalks, they'll walk away. They'll go away. If you start investigating the companies, there's hundreds and hundreds, they have a D minus on Better Business Bureau. So I'm all for business breeds business. I want more business in St. Helena. I do all the facials on the Mondavies, the Deldatos, the cake breads, the Mondavies. I have a good reputation in this industry, and we're two doors down. So it hurts my heart to see, and we were told by these people when we asked questions, that we're going to buy the business from my parents. They said, "Well, if you're worried about us, then you better be careful, because there's a company called Green Biotics going in," and they are hiding behind, I have the actual letter, they're hiding behind coffees and teas, and they're called Green Biotics. So they lure you in, and they have, you can read all the Yelp, it's not one Yelp review, there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds. It's a scam. And they did the same thing to us. They didn't show up. They did everything by telephone conference. They, they're just shady, and they, they don't have any business ethics. So it puts a damper on our business that's two doors down, that sells beauty products. It's actually embarrassing. So people will go on the other side of the street to get around them. They're extremely aggressive, extremely unethical, and it looks pretty, it looks real pretty, but it's, it's not what it looks like. So if you investigate, I guarantee you, you'll see, and we probably don't even need to stand here, but that's my, saying my piece.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Good evening. Planning Commissioners and Grace, thank you very much for taking the time to hear this, this item on your agenda tonight. As you know, I usually get up here, and I'm an advocate of just about any business to come to St. Helena that can help make our town better, and this is not one of them. I think if you do a little research on this company, you'll find that they have a location in La Jolla. I just, for the heck of it, tonight at 5:00 o'clock, Googled their address, went to Google Earth, spun the camera around, saw one of their neighbors, saw the name on the store right next to them, or very close to them. I picked up the phone and called that store in La Jolla, and I said, "Hey, I'm trying to figure out, these Green Biotic folks, kind of what they're doing." I said, "Are they kind of, you know, out there trying to get you to come in, and with some, some free samples, and then try to do something, high-pressure sales or something?" And this gal had no stake in the game. She didn't know who I was, and she said, "You know, we had a gal come into our store the other day, and she was very upset about what her experience was at that store." She said, "She was a little unclear about what exactly happened, but clearly she was upset." The store I'd called is a national retailer with a brand name you would recognize as being, having a ton of integrity. So I would just say that with the amount of challenges we have on Main Street right now, we can ill afford to have a retailer that would come in and make things so they are not approachable to people, or not want to welcome people, and this would be a prime example of what we want to avoid, even at the expense of keeping the storefront empty. So I would encourage you to deny their application. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any more public comment? I'll close public comment. Bobby, would you like to open the discussion?
Yeah, well, okay.
Microphone.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I had, in addition to some of the concerns that have been expressed by the public commenters, but I had concerns about the general plan and the findings, and I had trouble with finding number eight, reconcile that with the general plan 2.6.27, 2.6.39, 3.4.2, and number 10. I think that, you know, I think this is a formula store. I mean, it sounds like it is. We don't really have it specifically designed in our ordinance or the general plan as to how many stores mean it's a chain or a formula store, but this, this doesn't seem like a, you know, a standing, a store that would fit into the character of our city right now. So I was having trouble with that, in addition to the findings, and the, yeah, so I might want to say more, you know, after I hear what you guys have to say, too, but right now, I, I'm inclined to think, feel that this does not fit in with our town. It doesn't really, I read, I read a lot of reviews, I read the Better Business Bureau grade. I don't know how, that's just a piece of it, that's, you know, I'm not going to base my decision simply on that, but that, you know, that is, that is information. I noticed no one is here, you know, no one is representing them at this meeting, which is also information. So I'm not inclined to feel that this would be an addition, a good addition to our downtown business.
Thank you. John?
I know this shouldn't have any really influence on how I will vote, but I am troubled by an applicant who doesn't bother to show up. I'm, that way we can't ask the applicant exactly what's going on, which I find troublesome.
Often, the legal question comes up as to whether that is an appropriate consideration, and it actually is an appropriate consideration for you, because it allows you to make a finding that an applicant will not, for example, comply with zone, with, with your codes and the requirements and the conditions of approval and like that. So it really, that is something that would be, that would be appropriate for you to base a finding on. It wouldn't be the only thing I would recommend you make your finding on, but as you're going through your consideration of this, it would be important to think not only of that, but also in terms of the specific general plan policies that have been put in front of you, as well as the specific findings in your zoning ordinance, and to then articulate your concerns through that lens.
Well, then, given that, I think this may have three strikes against them. A, they're not here. B, they're a formula business. C, it seems to me their pricing structure is such that even though St. Helena is a relatively wealthy town, that this is above and beyond what one would consider to be local serving. So I, three strikes.
Well, I'm going to agree with what both of my colleagues have said. In addition, I'm going to add that I went up and I looked at all the stuff from La Jolla, from Naples, Florida, and someplace in Washington, I can't remember the first name. Almost everything on there was negative. They are rated D minus in La Jolla, a D in Washington, and a D in Naples, Florida, by the Better Business Bureau, and that's enough for me. I could not vote for this. I don't think they belong in our town. Do I hear a motion?
Move to reject?
Second.
So staff has only brought one resolution, and it is not to deny, so based on the input we've received, we will be bringing back a resolution for denial at the next meeting. You may recall, we've been directed to only bring one resolution.
I understand that.
So we will bring back, we'll prepare a resolution to deny and bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay. They also don't have a very good reputation in Carmel, so.
And if I could just add that, I think as we're developing these findings to memorialize the direction vote you're going to be giving this evening, we're going to be trying to go through all the various general plan policies and zoning ordinance findings to articulate the basis that we believe you've articulated this evening, and we'll bring that back to you, and you'll have a chance to review that.
And I would just summarize that we have, we've identified concerns over the character, the fit of the business into the city, their accountability, and maybe ability to enforce or comply with the regulations, and specifically findings number eight and 10 required for a use permit, as well as three general plan policies as enumerated by Commissioner Monet.
I also believe that there's no soliciting on the sidewalk, and if you read any one of the three cities that I just talked about, is they, they go out on the sidewalk and drag people into the store, so. I did my researches.
I've seen barkers, but never a cosmetics barker, so that would be interesting.
Well, it's a herb tea barker. All right, so we don't do a motion?
We need a roll call? To deny?
So the motion would be to take a direction vote to deny the project with direction to
staff to prepare findings memorializing the decision to deny the application.
Go ahead.
Yes, so moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
And Chair Kistner?
Yes.
All right, our next item is item 5.3, which is consideration of amendments to the city zoning ordinance. St. Helena Municipal Code SHMC, Title 17, potentially revising Section 17148, signs to be consistent with current case law is deemed appropriate by the Planning Commission.
May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kistner. First, I'd like to point out that there was an update to the redline strikeout version of the ordinance to essentially eliminate the campaign signs discussion. There was a little bit of miscommunication there, and we ended up inadvertently adding that back in. So the discussion regarding, or the code section regarding campaign signs has been stricken from the copy that is on the dais and has been provided at the back to the public, and our website has been updated to reflect those changes as well. So as we all know, there are several issues with the sign code as is currently written. Specifically, the code is in conflict with established court rulings related to free speech signs. Current municipal code, Section 17148040, states that no sign, addition to a sign, alteration of a sign, or replacement of a sign unless specifically excluded in Section 148020, shall be permitted in any district without first obtaining an administrative sign permit or a planning commission sign permit. And this section arguably therefore requires a permit for any sign not excluded. So. So in order to resolve these inconsistencies, the city should amend the municipal code to allow both the posting of small, non-commercial signs in all residential zones and election period signs in all zones, as described in the staff report. In addition to addressing the free speech provisions, staff has incorporated proposed changes into the sign code intended to reduce regulatory procedures by which signs are reviewed and approved by the city. We've made minor modifications to clarify the intent of the regulations and have also proposed conceptual wayfinding element to be reviewed by the commission and provide direction to us on that. Therefore, staff is recommending that the planning commission review the draft ordinance that had come before you, February 20th and May 1st as well, and the proposed text amendments in that ordinance, and recommend that the commission determine that the zoning code text amendments are exempt from the requirements of CEQA pursuant to CEQA guideline section 15061. And we recommend that the, and provide recommendation to the city council approving the proposed ordinance in order to update and modify the existing code regulations governing signs to establish compliance with current state law. And also review and provide staff direction on additional modification, modifications proposed to the code regulations governing signs. I'm here, Noah's here, and Tom is here to answer any legal questions you may have regarding these changes.
Well, I'm wondering.
Wait a minute, Bobby. I would like to ask my fellow commissioners how they'd like to go through this. You want to go through it, item by item?
You know, I did at one point, and I don't see, and I'm wondering about the looksee I gave to it. I don't see any of those incorporated or considered. So I don't know if we want to go through them one by one or as a group or how we do it.
Well, I have a question about what we had, what was on our, is this all changes that were not in here?
No. The only difference in that version compared to the version that's in your binder is the elimination of the campaign signs discussion.
Because that's not necessary anymore, given the temporary signs.
Correct.
Okay.
And to add to that, Commissioner Pont enumerated a number of very specific recommendations for code changes. Copies of those are on your dais. Those came in obviously after the agenda was published, and so we have not taken to incorporate these changes based on, we're waiting for the body of the commission to provide their direction. However, there are some excellent recommendations in here and some good catches, and so we would be looking to incorporate many of them to address the, kind of some of the missing elements of the code.
Do you want us to, I mean, I would, these, I haven't had a chance to look at, so maybe we could go through these individual things.
That may take us a while. The other thing is I, let me ask staff this. How much under a gun are we to get this done before, well, we're going to miss the June election, I take it. So this would put us in November.
The direction is to get this to the city council. It was the intent to be able to move this recommendation to the council because it is a first and a second reading and then 30 days after the ordinance, and we'll be coming up on the campaign time for the November election. So it is important to.
Right. We won't make June.
That's correct.
But we could make November even if this goes another two weeks.
I would like more time.
I'd hate to do that.
Well, I agree with that, though.
I agree, too.
I think this is very complex.
It is complex, and there's parts of here that feed into other parts and, you know.
I do have a few questions, though, that I would like to ask. I don't know if anybody else has any. Number one, some of the, some of the signs that are hanging off of some of the awnings downtown. One of them happens to my favorite restaurant, if you're aware of. I want to know what, I would like to know what that means to them. We've also got, we've also got someone up the street that paints things on the front of the windows. I'd like to know what that means. That wasn't clear to me in going through this, so I would like those kind of questions answered.
So generally, those extra type of signs that people tend to mount, hanging from their, their awnings or display in their windows are not permitted and would not be able to be permitted. So the, the intent of these changes are to essentially allow signs that meet the prescriptive requirements of the city, which is basically two signs on a primary frontage and up to two on a secondary frontage, I believe, and I can have Senior Planner Hecot correct me, to be approved administratively at the staff level. If, and this is not a policy change, this is just a procedural change, trying to streamline some of the, the things that are identified as meeting the code requirements, then anything that's outside of that would come to the planning commission for action.
What about sandwich boards?
Those are prohibited and they, they would remain prohibited. So essentially, the, there's no changes in the allowances for signs. It's more to change the procedures regarding commercial signage.
Okay, I also noticed that you've extended a lot of, a lot of the times.
That's correct. So there is some changes to the notification sign to make that in keeping with other elements of the code and to make it frankly more realistic for staff to be able to get those notices out.
I'm just trying to figure out some of the methodology that you guys have gone through.
Sure. Yeah, so it's primarily to make it more consistent and also to allow a little bit of breathing room for staff to get notices out. The only expansion in the allowances from the code perspective would be specific to free speech signs, which were previously identified as campaign signs. There has been some Supreme Court cases which said we can't single out that element of free speech. So someone can have a campaign sign in their front yard and they can also have a expression of free speech as a sign in their front yard. And staff and the city is not allowed to take that right away. We can limit the number, size, and location of how that speech is communicated.
Well, how would that work in the central business district where we've got the people that?
Write messages in their windows?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be, actually, that's an excellent question. So it would matter whether it's, has a commercial content to it. Commercial language, staff is allowed to limit and the city, I'm sorry, is allowed to limit and regulate. Free speech language, folks are allowed a certain amount of free speech and those, again, we can limit the size, number, and location of that. However, if it's the, one of the businesses I'm aware of that often draws, hand draws signs in their front window, often does not have a commercial message. And so that may fall to a free speech message, but this is something that we would engage the attorney with, and I don't know if Tom wants to add anything.
So this all started, I think, with me. Quite a while, about two years ago, someone raised a question about, about the city's campaign sign ordinance and that provision of our sign ordinance. And it is, it is unconstitutional under a case, Supreme Court case that came down a few years ago called Reed versus Town of Gilbert. It's cited in your staff report. And what the Reed case said, and it's one of the few cases that Justice Thomas actually wrote, but he had a, he had a fairly hefty court majority with him, with concurrences. The notion there is that your sign ordinances can't, they, they will be deemed content regulatory as, where they are drawing distinctions between how you're treating different classes of speakers, whether that's realtors, churches, people running for office, like that. You cannot treat them differently. And the city's existing sign ordinance provision for campaign signs is directly unconstitutional under Reed. Now, there are ways to deal with it, and we've undertaken to do that here. But for the last two years, my advice to the city has been, you cannot enforce that section of your side, sign code. For a lot of reasons that I won't get into, the effort to, to do what we're doing now, to amend the code, wasn't able to be brought before you, before now. But I can tell you that my advice will continue publicly to be, you cannot enforce your existing campaign sign regulation. And so I think that there was some interest at the staff level and, and I think at the council level as well, to try and get something in place that would be applicable during the upcoming election season that would pass constitutional muster under the Reed decision. Now, the other part of this, this equation and the whole body of the First Amendment law dealing with sign ordinances is way broader than this. So this is a gross oversimplification of it. But the other issue we've been trying to deal with is, derives from another Supreme Court case called Ledoux, decided in 1994. And Ledoux said, you can't just broadly prohibit people from exercising their free speech by posting a sign of some sort. Now, that doesn't mean you can't impose, as Director House was saying, reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, but you can't prohibit it altogether. Your existing sign ordinance actually prohibits free speech signs. The big question under Ledoux, and it hasn't been addressed yet in subsequent Supreme Court cases, is the one you raised, which is, how does that apply in a commercial district? Does Ledoux say, Ledoux obviously involved a prohibition on residential signs where people wanted on their house to post a sign in, in the window or on the lawn, as people often do. Ledoux didn't address that question, which is, can you allow signs in most of your districts, but maybe, maybe prohibit the free speech signs in your central business district? The most conservative advice that we can give, the one that will run the city the least risk of getting sued by a First Amendment plaintiff, is to allow some form of free speech expression in all districts of the city. That's what this does. But again, it depends on how, you know, how much you want to push the envelope and, and risk that First Amendment lawsuit. What I'm, I think what I'm trying to say is that I don't, I never like to sort of, you know, hold a flame to your, your decision-making feet because it's important that you look carefully at these and go through all of the various provisions to decide as a matter, what is the appropriate land use policy here? And there are a lot of lines to be drawn. But I can tell you that the longer it takes you to do that, we have no campaign, we have nothing that passes First Amendment scrutiny, and I will continue to advise that, that we cannot enforce our sign code in ways that I think many in the community would feel are important. And so we made an effort to try and, and Band-Aid this, get it to the council. And, and I think, you know, some suggestion was made that, for example, Commissioner Pont made great comments that I just had a chance to look at today with one of my partners. And, and we think there are some very good catches there and some very good points. And I think there is some sense that if the direction, if you could give this your recommendation, send it to the council, recognizing this is not, you know, the ideal way of dealing with it. But it, it would, that process would at least give staff a chance to respond to those comments, respond to other comments that might be raised in the meantime, get this to the city council such that the council would have an opportunity to get some kind of stopgap regulations in place in time for at least some of the election season. I'm not advocating that. I'm just suggesting that when you talk about what is the time crunch, that's it.
If, if I may, if we choose to, to approach it in that manner, we needed something now, would it be possible to just do 17148090, the replacement for same, and kick the rest of it back two weeks? That gives you the temporary, the temporary sign ordinance, just the temporary sign ordinance, and leaves the other things to be determined in two weeks. I mean, I still have some questions about the temporary sign ordinance, like how long is temporary? And I think Grace come up with a good one, you know, what about the business district? But.
Well, one of the, one of the things that that leads me into, Tom, is if they're allowed to do this on the front of their stores and stuff, can you limit the sizes of what they do?
Yes, it's our sense that, that the First Amendment jurisprudence does not preclude you from imposing, as, as your Director House has already told you, reasonable, what they call time, place, and manner restrictions. That would be on size, number, location, like that. It's the outright ban that we're concerned with.
And what does that do to an apartment building? If you can, I, I would think it's got to be per residence, right? Because I disagree with my neighbor. I want to put yes on X and he wants to put no on X. And the neighbor down from them wants to put maybe on X. So you've blown your size limit per building. I would think it would have to be per residence for multiple residential buildings. And since we have multiple business-owned, business-operated buildings downtown, I would think that would have to be per business. Now, what that does is it cures some of my question about how you can get to such large numbers on some of these zones. You're allowed X number of signs on the primary frontage. And then there's a rule that says your maximum primary frontage is X. Well, X is always considerably larger than what you're allowed. But if you add in the 12 square feet of signs, you're getting dickens of a lot closer to the higher max number you set. So that fixes that, I think. For example, in the central business district, you're allowed an aggregate of all signs on the primary frontage, including incidental signs, to not exceed 40 square feet. Well, you add up the three, the four types you're allowed, of which you're only allowed three. The max I could get was 26 square feet. But now if you add in 12 square feet of temporary sign, you're up to 38, which is almost 40. So you've got, you've got some room in there to accommodate these without making any changes there. And that is, that is per business, but it doesn't cover the per building in, you know, multiple residence buildings. And I, so I think we have to consider these per residence, not per parcel, at least when it comes to the temporary signs.
In a multifamily.
Unless, unless the owner has some restriction, which I suppose you could voluntarily sign, so to speak. But I think that would, that would end up at court.
I don't know about most of, about normal residents, but I do know that the mobile home residency law allows you to put as many signs as you want up, and they cannot stop you from doing that.
That's private property.
But I'm thinking about, you know, let's, let's pick one. The one nearest to you, right? That has, what, 40 apartments in it? That's one building, but it's 40 residences.
Are you talking about Stonebridge?
Yes. So if you say each one, each building is only allowed 12 square feet, then if you've got 10 people that disagree or 10 people that agree, and everyone put up the same sign, you've blown through your 12 square feet right away.
So I think from a staff perspective, general input on number of business signs, size of business signs would be helpful. And I think basically it's, are the number of signs allowed per business and the size of them that are allowed in the code adequate? That would be helpful to staff. I do agree that the comment regarding the ability for every resident to provide their own free speech is a good one, and I think we could incorporate that. So I think general comments like that would be helpful to staff to then go back and polish. Again, this could be done as a recommendation of the council. It could be done as a partial recommendation. But I do feel we could capture most of the concerns of the commission over the regulations just with direction. Again, because there's no real policy change in this code. It's basically a procedure. And then the policy code changes are relating to allowing free speech signage as we're mandated to do by the courts. Separate from that is enforcement, which is, I would say it's a different conversation topic. It is. It is very common for businesses to not comply with the sign code, just because it's so easy to tape a, you know, a sale sign up, or a this or that sign up. And the code does allow that on temporary limited bases, but many businesses exceed that allowance.
So is the enforcement complaint-driven?
Our code enforcement in Santa Elena is 90, is essentially complaint-driven. Very occasionally, very rarely, if staff is going by unpermitted construction or has concern about a substandard housing condition, we will initiate code enforcement directly.
The sign, the sign stuff is...
Sign stuff is generally complaint-driven.
And I'm wondering, if we do nothing tonight, then it sounds like it will stay in, it'll stay the way it is, which sounds like the way it is is in compliance with these Supreme Court decisions?
No, it's just the opposite of that. So right now, the city has an unconstitutional sign ordinance.
No, I know, but I mean, the practice. If we didn't do anything now, we'd still have the wrong ordinance, but people would be able to continue doing whatever they're doing, and it wouldn't change...
Well, there, so there are only, I mean, the entire sign ordinance is not unconstitutional, and so there are provisions that you have, and you're dealing with commercial signs and other provisions that are, that are just fine and will continue to be applicable and enforced. What I had intended to say was that you will know, the city will not be able to enforce what is now 090, which is the campaign sign section. And if somebody puts a sign in their yard that is what we're calling a free speech or a Ledoux sign, we can't stop that, even if it's, you know, enormous.
Disingenuous?
Or if it's disingenuous, especially if it's disingenuous.
Right, so essentially, though, if we didn't do anything until two weeks, you know, people could just be pretty, I mean, you know, I don't see how that would hurt anything if we just take two more weeks before we...
So I think the concern that's been articulated is that the city wants to have something to replace its campaign sign provisions. It wants some provisions that apply to election signs. And so if you, until you do something, and then the city council does something, we, the city has nothing that is enforceable that will regulate signs that are posted in connection with elections.
So, yeah, but we already said that the June election is, you can't, we can't do anything about that anyway, so would two weeks make, you know, a significant, would that have an impact?
But Bobby, there are, there are health and safety reasons to do this. For example, let me, let me give you one, it's pretty straightforward. I live on a corner, okay? There's supposed to be a vision triangle on my corner, that's for safety, so when a car comes up, it can see far enough down the street the other way to tell they're not going to get hit when they pull out, right? Let's say I put in a 10-foot-tall, 10-foot-wide sign right on the corner that says yes on X, and the city comes by and tries to close me down, and they say, well, you know, you're blocking the vision triangle. And I'm going to say, this is free speech, I'm going to court. In the meantime, somebody gets hit on that corner. So there are, there are legitimate reasons to do this.
I'm not saying there aren't, I'm just wondering if two weeks will make a difference as, you know, with respect to, you know, to what's going on, you know, to be able to stop that 10-foot sign for the June election. I mean, hopefully, I mean, what I heard you say, would it wouldn't, it's not going to, it's too late for this June election.
Too late for June.
So would two weeks make it too late for the November election? And if not, why don't we wait two weeks?
Well, they do the first and second reading, so that's 30 days. We add two weeks to it, you know, and say another two weeks to process it, so that's, if we act tonight, they'll have it in place in two months.
And if we act in two weeks, they'll have it in place...
90 days is closer to accurate, like to have it adopted, codified, all those things. So that puts you in August, which is when the campaign season often starts.
Which is full-blown campaign season.
Right, but if we get there by September, you can still do what you have to do.
I guess the question staff would have is what do you need in that additional two weeks?
I mean, I want to be able to digest all the additions that were, we were given tonight, plus Commissioner Pont's additions.
On the first reading, is it possible to do modifications between the first reading and the second reading? No. Okay.
Only what are considered to be sort of ministerial, or typographical types of corrections.
Okay, so we couldn't start something and then fix it in the second reading?
I mean, if you could show me that, it makes a difference.
Could we do just the 17148090 and nothing else?
Yeah, so from the staff perspective, if, if basically tackling the sign code in a short period of time, which this is, is not something the commission wants to do. Staff would recommend you act on the campaign element to allow us to move that forward so we can get our sign code into compliance with the law, while we discuss broader sign elements, and we could fold that into one of the numerous ordinances that are going to be coming forward to modify the zoning code in the coming months.
Could we do a double header?
Which would be?
Which would be the sign code, which we're going over now, which we're missing two members, which has got changes that I assume are going to be incorporated eventually. I would say this would be a lot easier to carry it as a twofer with...
With another zoning code, absolutely. Staff is intending to do that with some of these broader discussions, just to clear, to streamline the amending process.
Then, if, if the city attorney believes that, or is able to get us to believe, that 090 is sufficient unto the day, and the rest of it could be brought forward later, I'm cool with that.
I have a question. If zero, okay, so we do that, and then you make some changes. Is there any, what if, what if those changes, I mean, is there any way to review those changes at a later date, and if they seem not okay to make changes to those changes? Or is that set, is that off the table then from any discussion from now on?
So you're saying if you, if the commission saw they wanted to make some additional changes to the free speech signs?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, obviously, staff would entertain that. This was reviewed by two attorneys, one of which specializes in free speech signs, and the goal was intended to bring us into compliance with the law.
Just asking if...
But obviously, the commission can direct staff to amend the zoning code as they see fit, again...
I did have one problem with the, with 090 as written. It speaks to signs in residential districts.
We would recommend you delete residential.
Yeah, and...
That's right.
Not all these signs will be in residential districts. Not all of them will be on conforming, you know, they'll be in grand, some of them will be grandfathered residences, not in residential districts.
They'll be in all districts.
So you would get sued over that, I would think.
Or it could be a store owner wanting to express their free speech, so that we would resident, we would recommend that go to all districts.
I would think some of this would have to be fixed before we, we agree to 090.
Well, let's go through it and fix it.
Okay. Right off the bat, temporary non-commercial signs...
Could I just, before you do, I just, I want to correct what I think might be a miscommunication or misperception. I just think, my recommendation is that something has to be done in 090 along the lines of, and in the structure we've presented it. But for example, with respect to the size of the signs and the numbers, those are not purely legal calls, those are policy calls for you all to make. And so it's, I don't want to suggest that this and only this in front of you is the only constitutional ordinance that you could adopt, that's not the case.
I got, I got no problem with 12 square feet. I would like a definition of temporary, I don't know if we want to take the risk of doing that, because if you put out a definition of temporary that nobody else has put out, or a definition temporary that somebody else is getting sued under, we would get wrapped into that as well. So there's no definition what temporary is. I think we, in here?
Yeah.
Is it long enough?
Is it, I'm sorry, is it?
Is it long enough?
Where is it?
If you look under the definitions section, page four of 13.
Four, one, two, three, four. Yeah, is that the one that says after the event, or whatever it is?
No, it's a numbered, it's the second line from the top. Temporary sign means...
Yeah.
Oh, as opposed to...
Read it.
That's the construction, but at the bottom of the page...
But that's, but that doesn't say how long.
At the bottom of the page, K1, K...
Oh, yeah, and then, and then further down, thank you, there is a temporary advertising signs.
Yeah, which does have, but that's a temporary advertising sign. Temporary sign means construction...
Yeah, but an advertising sign, you wouldn't figure, I wouldn't consider it a non-commercial sign.
No, that, that is a commercial sign, that's correct, so, yes.
I, I don't, I don't think that distinction has to be made in this, in this 090.
Oh, that, that raises a question.
I think the issue is you can never stop someone from expressing their free speech, and so therefore, if I wanted to have a sign expressing my free speech up 365 days a year, it would still be a temporary sign by the nature of its construction. But I understand your point of the, why are we calling it a temporary sign, it should just be a free speech sign or a...
Impermanent sign, perhaps? But that says something else. That does bring up another technical question. Your temporary advertising signs, 12 inches are smaller. What about the special signs they can put up inside that are, what is it, four square feet? That are allowed in the central business district? Where is that?
Is that an incidental?
Yeah, yeah, which, you'd have a permanent incidental sign?
Definition incidental.
Okay. So are you allowed, well, never mind, you're not allowed, okay? So it becomes a question, how many square feet literally is a business allowed? All right, you can have, if you're in the central business district, you can have three signs on your primary frontage, which amounts to 22 square feet. You can have two incidental signs, which amount to four square feet, so that's 26 square feet. Now here, you're talking about temporary advertising signs, 12 inches or smaller. But it doesn't say how many you can put up, does it? 12, no, just says 12 inches or smaller, so I put up a dozen 12 inches or smaller temporary signs. So how many of these can I have in my window?
I think you're subject to a total square footage limitation.
Then you're, then you're, you're defaulting to your 40 square feet.
That's right.
But then if I put up my 12 square feet of yes-on-X signs, you've blown your 40 square feet.
That's above and beyond the limited commercial signage, because that's free speech, and that's, you're allowed that in addition to, in a commercial district.
Okay.
It was according to this code.
That's how you're going to read that? Okay.
On J...
Maybe we need to, can we make them smaller in a commercial zone?
Or you could, you could amend the amount, allowed square footage of total signage in the commercial district to include all types of signs, including free speech, and then just...
I think we need to do that, otherwise you're talking about 40, 52, that's, 52 square feet is a big chunk. Some of these businesses, that would be their, pretty much their total frontage.
So that, are we saying we want to do that as a part of this 090 change, or is that something we want to bring back later?
I don't know if we have time to do it in 090, but it affects 090. So can we affect 090 by changing the zoning, the signed zoning ordinance for a commercial district?
What?
While not changing 090?
I'm sorry.
Well, 090 says you can have 12 square feet, right?
Okay.
Okay. Business district, you can go in a, let's, let's stick with, with central business district frontage, right? You're maxed out at 40 square feet. Now, the director was saying, in his interpretation, that 40 square feet would be for advertising commercial-oriented signs, that 12 square feet would be above and beyond that.
John, just to clarify one thing, the 12 square feet, it's six square feet per side, so on a building frontage, you're only going to get six. Just...
Where are you, which one?
Yeah, but it says they can have two of them, right?
Is he talking about letter L on, oh, 090?
Yes, but they can have two of them, correct? Yeah. They can have two six-foot square signs. Each parcel is permitted two, we're going to have to change the parcel language as well. We can't say parcel either. It has to say residence or business.
Right, right.
Right? So they get, so if you count both sides, it's 24 square feet, but you're right, on a business, it would probably not be able to stick out, so it would be, still be 12.
That's all you're going to see as well?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
You might see 12 on both sides if you...
Well, be stuck on a window so you could walk in and see the other side.
Well, if you want to do that, I mean, you know, I mean, just can read them anyway.
So it seems to me we need to do some fixes to 090 before we can go with 090.
So just to...
Because we're parcel-oriented, we're zone-oriented, I don't think we can do that.
Just to clarify, if you leave in residential districts, as it's currently written, then we would satisfy the Supreme Court ruling of the Ledoux case. We would not have to address the free speech in commercial districts as of right now. We would be in compliance with the findings of the Supreme Court, and we would be able to move that forward to the city council for adoption and modification.
Would that turn us into the test case for the Pacific Legal Foundation?
Well, we haven't been sued on our existing out-of-compliance ordinance.
I don't want to run the risk there.
My sense, my sense is that, is that this was, the effort here in 090 was, was more or less surgical. The first part of 090 is to deal with Ledoux, it's the free speech in residential districts. The second part is to deal with REED, which is to get rid of the content-based distinction for campaign signs. And I think we've accomplished that, and if you were to send that to the city council, then you could later decide whether and to what extent you want to extend Ledoux into your, into your business district in commercial.
Somebody certainly will do that.
Who's the other one? Oh, REED.
Just a matter of when.
Can I ask a question, probably on, on page, on the definitions, four of 13, on L, oh, no, wait, on J? No more than one national flag of a country, does that mean of each country or of any country? So you can have one American flag, one British flag, one Russian flag, one, you know, so I'm not clear about that.
So we haven't had to interpret or apply that code provision since I've worked here.
Right.
So I would guess, I would, I guess, again, getting back to...
It should be clear.
From what would help staff, rather than been identifying specific concerning language, it would be helpful if you identified what the concern is, and then staff can go back and fix the language to address the concern.
Okay, well, my concern is if that's, if someone had several flags from different nationalities or whatever.
Well, I'm going to make a suggestion. I'm going to suggest that we do 148090 tonight. And then I think that kind of question, Bobby, I would address in writing to the planning director, so that they're prepared to bring back the things that we're questioning next time they bring this back.
Yeah, under, under 090, if I hung up two flags, I don't think there'd be anything they could do about it, because I would say, that's my free speech right, is two flags.
That's correct.
If they were 12 feet, though.
Even, even though your ordinance says they can only hang one of a country, if I hang two US flags up, I, I think you'd be out of luck.
I wonder if the size would matter.
Well, once again, they, they can't be over six square feet, right?
I guess.
But that's a, that's a two-by-three flag, which is pretty... But that's a, that's a two-by-three flag, which is a pretty decent-sized flag.
You couldn't have a Russian one that was bigger than the American.
So I think, I think we have interpretation problems here unless we go around and fix these.
So what you guys are saying, we should just say, okay, 090?
I'm, I'm happy to do 090 tonight.
I am too. I really think we should do that.
And fix the other stuff.
Yeah, and I think we fix.
As a combo later on, including.
Maybe some of it we have to fix to make it fit this.
Two flags. Yeah.
This might be a sign that we're never going to get this done.
If we're looking for a motion, and we've got the city attorney telling us that 090 cures the city's current legal problems with their sign ordinance, although it pretty clearly won't cure it ad infinitum, because there's obviously follow-up cases built into those two. So, given that, I would like to move 090 as written. And, well, that wouldn't be part of the motion, but on a separate note, suggest staff come back later with a twofer with the rest of the stuff.
And just to clarify, that would be in the cleanup version that was brought this evening by staff, the language.
This one?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, as, as written in the handout.
Right.
So is that, is all of that part of your motion, or just the 090?
Well, technically, only the 090 can be. The rest of it's kind of a fond hope, not voiced as part of the motion.
Well, let me, let me clarify, that, that what was presented to you this evening also brings to you the deletion of the former definition of the term campaign sign, which also would be important to include in your motion.
Well, isn't the, yeah, we're replacing 090.
Yes, but in the definitions at the beginning of the whole chapter, there is also a stray definition of the term campaign sign that needs to go.
Okay, yes, I'll, I'll accept that modification.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Chuck Kistner?
Yes. I would, however, suggest now that we start sending Noah the, the comments that we have ahead of time, so they can start working with it. So we don't have to go through this whole thing all over again.
So, so staff, we got your motion and vote. Staff is interested in, and we would like to get this fixed. And so staff is interested in general feelings about wayfinding signs?
Okay.
And you would like it in writing ahead of time?
Even tonight. Basically, we don't want to spend time on something that this majority of the commission doesn't feel is appropriate.
I like wayfinding signs. And I'd like to personally apologize for my typing skills, I'm sure all of you noticed. I'm a two-finger typist, and sometimes I forget to use the thumbs on the space bar. I'm sure that's really noticeable in some spots.
So I heard from one commissioner that staff could incorporate a conceptual wayfinding sign policy that we bring forward for commission to review?
Yes.
I think it's dumb to have a policy that you can't enforce.
So that's a separate topic. Again, there's another question about procedures in these changes. Staff is interested in hearing from the commission whether they are interested in streamlining the procedures so less signs have to come before the commission if they meet very prescriptive requirements.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I guess my main concern is, I don't mean to be glib, but when I was, you know, six years ago, when I was first on the planning commission, someone from the public had taken down their sandwich signs because they were told to by the city, and no one else had, no one else complied with that request. It was a letter to the businesses. And that person complained to me that, you know, that they had followed the law and they were losing business while those who were breaking the law weren't, and that she was requesting either a change in the ordinance or equal application of consequences, you know, or, you know. And I brought it to the commission and nothing, it was, it was, the idea of changing the ordinance was, was scotched, and there was no, there was, nothing ever happened that was different. So that kind of discrepancy in how these, in how the ordinances are applied, especially since it's complaint-driven, that's, that's a concern of mine. So, you know, I think these, the ordinance are really important, but it needs to be just and fair as well. So that, you know, I, I don't know how the language can, I don't know if that can be solved with the language or different processes, or I'm not sure what to do with that.
So I hear what you're saying. This is a challenge that every jurisdiction that I'm aware of experiences. I don't believe we're going to be able to solve it with the ordinance. I think no matter what regulation you have regarding signage, there is likely to be someone who is out of compliance, because it's very easy to handwrite a sign and tape it up, or, or have a sale. And as a business owner, you're going to be motivated to do that. So the only way to do it would be to find staff resources to constantly patrol the city for sign enforcement.
Well, no, I'm not suggesting.
But so, but what I'm stepping back from is, what staff is asking for is direction on trying to modify the process to make it a little less bureaucratic and staff-intensive by having to prepare staff reports for a sign decision that comes to the planning commission.
I'm personally happy to have staff run as much as, as they can run internally, not having to come to us, not having to have the proponent, you know, come to us, not having the proponent fund this, you know. Let's, let's make it easier for staff, easier for the public, easier for the applicants. I've, I've got absolutely no problem at all, because if we have a set of fairly prescriptive rules, there aren't a lot of questions.
Yeah, I don't have an argument with that. I guess.
And, and as far as the, the, the thing about the, the A-frames goes, I don't see a lot of A-frames downtown anymore. So, over time, it worked.
I guess it's, I guess it's the discrepancy. I'm wondering if you could build into it somehow, an anonymous way for businesses to complain about other businesses, because I think this person could have done that, but because it's a small town, they did not want to. So I don't know if that's fits into what you're.
So, so separate from that, the planning, or the city council has identified a goal of re, basically modifying the city's code enforcement process. And staff does intend to put some additional sign enforcement provisions to give the staff more teeth in, enforcing the sign regulations.
With some whistleblower protections.
Just so you know, it is, the staff policy, we do not share complainants' names. We just don't, we wait for a complaint before we go find the problem.
Right, I understand that. But I'm wondering if there are, if there are whistleblower protections or a way to do it without even submitting a name. So, you know, I, I don't know if there is. I would just suggest that you consider this.
Well, I'll tell you, Bobby, I certainly wouldn't put in a complaint, I certainly wouldn't accept a complaint that I'm, that somebody didn't assign their name to.
Why not? You can go out and see.
It's a best practice.
No, I would not.
Well, there's, there's, I can tell, there is some intent in being able to identify who is filing the complaint to make sure they are actually a resident or a citizen of the community.
My sense is if somebody's out of compliance, it shouldn't make a difference.
But a complaint doesn't mean a violation.
I know it. It means that if you have a complaint, then you go out and check to see if there's a violation. And if there is, then you can proceed with, with, so it doesn't really matter who makes the complaint, unless you start getting thousands of complaints a day, which I don't think is.
That, that is the case if we had unlimited staff resources, then it wouldn't matter. But because staff resources are limited and we're tasked with multiple priorities, having a, knowing that it is from a resident or someone who has a vested interest in the community is the basis for that requirement.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't make it anonymous because you would want to keep the number of complaints down? That's what I'm hearing you say.
I would want to make sure the complaint is coming from someone who has a vested interest in making the complaint. But this is a different topic of conversation that's not agendized. Staff will be bringing back some, I'm asking for a specific direction not related to code enforcement. It's related to.
Process.
Signage.
Signage and process for sign application approval.
Yes.
Not enforcement of the regulations.
I understand, but some of these, some of this information, if it were in place, would be important to have in the application process, so people would know, you know, that, you know what I'm saying, that, that if we did change it, so that complaints could come from any place.
I would suggest that's, that's important to the entire zoning code. I mean, I would suggest enforcement is important for the entire zoning code. And enforcement of these kinds of civil violations is always difficult, expensive, time-consuming, rough on the community. And it's not, and it's not part of this discussion. I'd be happy to discuss it or agendize it sometime later.
That's right.
We're not there.
Yes.
All right. Do you have any department reports?
I do. So along those, that line of topic, the city council adopted their budget last Wednesday, conceptually, I'm sorry, it wasn't adopted. They held a budget hearing and provided conceptual direction on the budget, which will be brought to the council.
Shortest one in history.
Yes, which will be brought before the council for adoption in June. As a part of that, there were some changes to the process for design review that were directed by the city council. They directed us to no longer bring design review exemptions before the commission for review and action, similar to the idea if something meets all the requirements and is deemed to be exempt from design review, that they can proceed with a building permit. So that's just something the commission should be aware of. Separately, staff was also directed to modify the projects that are required to obtain design review approval from the planning commission, such that renovations of existing homes, so we've seen some where the roofline changes, materials change, and those have been brought before the commission. And some commissioners have said this shouldn't be here. The council directed us to modify that. And in addition, additions to homes and other minor changes are being directed to no longer come before the planning commission. That includes an asterisk or allowance for staff to elevate any application to the planning commission who has the potential for controversy or that staff determines should be elevated. But I just wanted to inform you of that. You will be seeing an ordinance modifying the design review process to address that at the direction of the city council, and we will be moving forward with that ordinance relatively quickly in order to address this direction.
Can I ask a question about that? Okay. Is there any place in this process where someone could question the validity of an exemption from SEQA?
This is not a categorical exemption, this is a design review exemption, the discussion. SEQA will be conducted, a SEQA determination will be made regarding these changes, and that will be included in the ordinance. So it is changing something that's discretionary to ministerial.
Right, I'm just wondering, so there's no review except from you guys on it?
There will not be a SEQA determination on building permits that qualify for this, that's correct.
Okay, if there were neighbor complaints, that wouldn't, no.
There is not. It's a ministerial process.
Next item is the agenda forecast?
Well, that, that was my department report. The agenda forecast has essentially been transferred to the project list that's provided on the website. That's kept up to date. I would encourage anyone who's interested in any specific projects to review the files there. As resubmittals are made, the previous submitted documents are replaced. So it is, whatever is in that file is the most current materials that is being reviewed by the staff.
Okay. Meetings adjourned.